Welcome to the Goodyear Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. We're excited to have you be a part of this important public process. Tonight, you will have the opportunity to address the commission on both non-agenda and agenda items. The agendas and speaker request cards are located in the back of the council chambers. You must fill out a speaker request card in order to address the commission. Please hand in your completed card to a city staff member. You may check the "I do not wish to speak" option on the card. This allows you to still voice your opinion on an item on the record without having to speak. In accordance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, please contact a staff member if you need any assistance. Public comment on a non-agenda item will take place during the citizen comment portion of the evening. These are items that don't appear on tonight's formal agenda. The commission secretary will call your name when it's time for you to speak. At that time, please approach the podium and tell us your name for the record. You'll have a maximum of three minutes. The timer is on the screens visible from the podium. Note that you may also choose not to speak if other speakers before you have said what you wanted to say. Shouting, cheering, and loud noises will not be tolerated and violators may be removed for disrupting the meeting. Goodyear Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting stream live on YouTube and online at GoodyearAZ.gov. Follow the city's social media pages so you don't miss out on all that's happening in Goodyear. Thank you for coming to this meeting and being an active part of your city. And remember, it's a great time to be in Goodyear.
Good evening. Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting, Wednesday, September 10th on 2025, will now come to order. Will you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will the secretary know the role?
Good evening. Chairman Kleimer is present, Vice Chair Sambito is present, Commissioner Nepomassino is present, Commissioner Wang is absent, Commissioner Hegitus is present, Commissioner Booth is present, and Commissioner Roberts is present. We have a quorum. At this time, a vote should be taken to excuse members unable to attend due to extenuating circumstances. Is there a motion and a second to excuse Commissioner Wang from the meeting? I have a motion from Commissioner Nepomassino and a second from Commissioner Hegitus. Please enter your vote. Motion passed.
Okay, item number one is to approve the draft minutes of the last meeting. Will the secretary please read the recommendation?
Approve the draft minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting held on August 13th, 2025. Is there a motion and a second for the staff recommendation? Have a motion from Commissioner Booth and a second from Commissioner Hegitus. Please enter your vote.
Now's the time for citizens who would like to address-
Sorry, just, we're almost done. Commissioner Nepomassino? Oh, thank you.
Okay.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now's the time for citizens who would like to address the Planning and Zoning Commission in any non-agenda item this evening. Anybody for a non-agenda item? Okay, thank you. And now there's an opportunity for commission members to disclose any ex parte communication they may have had prior to this meeting for any scheduled discussion on this agenda. Ex parte communication is an outside communication commissioners may have had regarding tonight's agenda. Anyone? Okay. There are two public hearings on the agenda tonight. As a reminder, the Planning and Zoning Commission is a recommendation vote for the board of council. The commission will vote on each item and their recommendation to council. Council makes the final decision on all items. Agenda item number two is the use permit for limited outdoor storage and display. I'm going to open the public hearing. Senior Planner Justin Gabrielson will present. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioner Kleimer and Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Justin Gabrielson, senior planner here at the city of Goodyear. I am here before you this evening with a request from Charles McNeely to request a use permit for minimum outdoor storage and display to provide the storage and display for Tractor Supply Co. The project is located at the northwest corner of West Famburran Street and North Central Avenue. Tractor Supply will be developing on a 6.84 acre lot, adding 13,895 square feet fenced-in outdoor display area as well as a trailer staging area. The site is currently zoned C2, general commercial. To the north of the site, we have Palm Valley Crossing. To the east of the site is Thrive at a Vision Goodyear, which is a 47-unit R1A community. To the south is Avondale and several commercial uses. And to the west of the site is a U-Haul Storage and Precious Home Service as well as additional Palm Valley Crossing shopping area. The nearly 14,000-square-foot display will be screened on all four sides and provide an access gate on both the north and south side of the area as well as these two areas for trailer staging. The outdoor display was designed with the Cow Ranch outdoor display area in mind, which was previously approved by City Council on December 9th, 2013. We performed an alternative citizen review for this project, being that the use itself was not within 500 feet. However, since the property was within 500 feet, if there was any kind of opposition to the project, we were willing to hold a neighborhood meeting. However, to this day, there have been no questions, comments, or concerns heard from the public. Staff is requesting that you recommend approval recommend approval with stipulations for the use permit for a limited outdoor display and storage for the development of a 13,895-square-foot outdoor display and storage area for Tractor Supply Co. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Justin. Any questions?
Yes, I have questions. Justin, can you explain to me, it looks like we're removing a bunch of the parking. Can you explain to me how they're planning to account for that parking that was taken away?
Absolutely. So they did do a traffic study and they did submit a traffic study as well. They believe that during the peak hours, they will only, the parking lot will only need 307 parking spaces, which is still available even with the removal of the 60 or so parking spaces that are being removed. They showed us a few tables basically saying that at 12:00 PM would be peak, which would require 307 spots. And before that, at, or sorry, peak would be at 1:00. At 12:00 would be 285 and at 2:00 PM would be 299. So they believe that even with the removal of the spots, that this parking lot will be able to handle any business that is there during the day.
And then I noticed that there's a pad at the southeast corner. Is, it looks like it's not a part of the development itself. Is that still able to develop in the future as a separate pad?
I'm not sure about that. It is its own parcel and pad, as you said.
And has its own parking?
Yes. So I think that when originally developed, that that was going to be used as parking. But I guess, you know, it is its own parcel. We would have to approach that when it came and we would see what our options are with what they would be allowed to do with the parking that is available.
Okay. Well, I'm excited to see Tractor Supply because it would be a nice use in there. So that's all my questions.
What's an example of a outdoor, limited outdoor display?
Yeah, so Cow Ranch, right here, across Bullard Wash, actually has an outdoor display. Basically, it's just an outdoor area that houses things that, larger things that just don't fit inside. For some reason, the only thing that I can think of are like little kiddie pools, like the little plastic ones that you put in your backyard. But I know that there's other things out there as well.
Thank you. Is the applicant here and would they like to say anything?
Does not appear so.
Okay, all right. Very good. Are there any speaker cards?
I have one speaker card in support from Jeff Levy. He does not wish to speak.
Okay, thank you. Would any one of the audience like to speak on this agenda item? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Will the secretary read the staff recommendation?
Recommend conditional approval of the use permit request for limited outdoor display proposed on the subject property, subject to stipulations. Is there a motion, is there a motion for the staff recommendation or a motion to recommend denial of the staff recommendation? I have a motion from Commissioner Nepomassino and a second from Commissioner Booth. Please enter your vote. Oh, sorry. The vote, floor is open for commission discussion.
They might want to say anything. I've tracked it. I've heard about that company. I've never seen one, but I think it'll be a good addition for that area.
It's a, it's a great store. We had a number of them where I came from. Very nice addition, especially in that part of town there. It'd be nice for them.
Is there something I'm going to find in there?
Well, there's all kinds of good stuff in there.
Well, it's a lot closer. I used to go to Buckeye.
There you go.
So.
Yeah, it'll be nice to have it at home.
Yeah.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, all right.
Okay, please enter your vote. Okay, motion passes. And the recommendation for approval will be forwarded to the city council, excuse me, for the September 22nd meeting.
Agenda item number three is the Estrella 1-4 rezone. I'm going to open the public hearing. Principal Planner Ann Dolmage will present. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman Kleimer and commissioners. This is a rezone request for a portion of Estrella known as Community 14. Estrella 14 consists of approximately 1,505 acres. It's currently zoned Estrella Phase 2 Planned Area Development. It's located directly south of Estrella Foothills High School. Encantemia, Montecito, and Gulf Village are existing communities that border the site to the west. The existing zoning envisioned a variety of uses for this site, including single and multifamily residential, civic uses in parks, and commercial. And a large regional, sorry, large regional commercial center or mall was expected to be located at the north end of the site, and that's shown here as the large red area. The future State Route 303 alignment was once expected to run along the eastern boundary of the site, and that alignment has since been moved to the west by ADOT. So without that freeway extension, a commercial center of this scale is no longer viable in this area. Most of the project site falls within the neighborhood's land use designation of the general plan, and that's the light orange area in the exhibit on the right side of this slide. This designation is intended for a range of housing products, public and community facilities, and neighborhood-serving commercial. There is a small area near the intersection of Estrella Parkway and Willis Road, which falls within the business and commerce designation, and that's the light red area on the map. This designation allows for commercial and employment uses as well as multifamily residential. There is also a village center overlay centered over the intersection of Estrella Parkway and Willis, and that's depicted as a circle with red hatching. This overlay applies to areas that are expected to serve as neighborhood destinations. And finally, the Estrella Parkway Growth Corridor is along the western, I'm sorry, the eastern, yeah. The western boundary of the project site from its northern edge down to the intersection of Willis Road, and that's the exhibit on the left. Growth corridors are not regulatory or restrictive, but they're areas where commercial and employment uses, housing, educational institutions, and similar development is expected to concentrate to promote future growth. The request before you tonight is to rezone this area to the Estrella 14 Planned Area Development. This proposed PAD will largely allow the same uses that are permitted under the existing zoning. However, the PAD will implement a system of layered land use groups or LUGs to define where various uses could go, and it will also implement some modified use permissions and development standards. And we'll learn a little bit more about that on coming slides. And this PAD will also permit a smaller number of residential units that are allowed under the current zoning. So the proposed rezone will establish six land use groups or LUGs. Each land use group allows for specific zoning districts and uses within their boundaries. The groups are layered over each other and are intended to show where certain uses may be located, but not necessarily where they will be located. So there are full details in the staff report, but I'll just go through a quick rundown of each group, starting with the largest. There's the open space lug, which is the green area. That's for natural landscapes, parks, sports fields, trails, and other recreational uses. And there's a hillside area at the southwest corner of the project site, and that area falls only within the open space lug. The civic space lug is the blue area. That's for government, community, or recreational facilities. And then we have the estate lug in the light yellow. This is where the single-family residential districts could go, and that includes traditional single-family as well as court homes and attached homes. Then we have the village lug, which is the dark yellow, and that's lower-density multifamily up to 12 units per acre, plus neighborhood-serving commercial. The hub lug is the light orange. That's middle-density multifamily up to 18 units per acre and general commercial. And then finally, we have the core lug, which is the dark orange or red. That's for high-density residential of up to 24 units per acre and mixed use. So this layered system orients the higher-intensity uses like high-density multifamily residential, community-serving commercial, and mixed use toward that intersection of Estrella Parkway and Willis Road. Lower-intensity uses like open space, civic uses, single-family residential, they have more flexibility in where they could be located. As we get preliminary plat and site plan applications, each application will need to declare a specific zoning district that will apply to that site, and then that application will be reviewed against the standards for that district. So just some key points to go over. The new PAD would allow up to 6,034 residential units, and of those, up to 864 could be multifamily. A minimum of 18% of the site will be open space, and that's site-wide. And that's expected to include a community amenity, possibly similar to the Star Point Residence Club or Presidio Residence Club that are already out there, as well as a system of trails and paths. A specific acreage of commercial is not established, but commercial will be located within the appropriate land use groups. Village, hub, and core is described on the previous slide. So this rezone is proposing several revised development standards, and I won't try to go through all of them, but I'll hit some of, some of the major examples here. It's proposing reduced rear setbacks for all residential, all single-family residential districts. And these single-family districts will be required to provide additional amenities over what the zoning ordinance requires to help compensate for those reduced rear setbacks. There will be no lot coverage limits for any single-family districts. R1-4 and R1-6 will be allowed to have reduced lot sizes and reduced lot widths. And open space in the single-family developments may count toward the 18% open space requirement that's applicable to the whole site. And at least 75% of the required open space must be usable, and there is a definition for usable in the regulatory document. For multifamily residential, the PAD will provide flexibility in building heights for pitched roof designs, flexibility for side and rear setbacks in open space requirements depending on project design. And any communal open space will count toward the 18% overall requirement. And there's also specific open space requirements on a development-by-development basis, too. Private open space does not count toward the bigger 18% requirement. The rezone will establish a mixed-use district, which is a new zoning district for us. It's not already in the zoning ordinance. This new district will use the C2 development standards, but development in this district could include commercial, multifamily, or public facilities. And there are some unique standards for drive-through restaurants as well as for gas stations and car washes, which we'll see on the next slide. For drive-through restaurants, end cap and multi-tenant drive-throughs will be permitted in the core lug if they're at least 150 feet from residential. Additionally, up to two standalone drive-throughs will be permitted in the core lug. They will also have to meet that buffer requirement. All other drive-through restaurants will need to follow the zoning ordinance standards in effect at the time of application. Again, the PAD also has some specific standards for gas stations and car washes. One gas station or service station and one car wash will be permitted as long as it's at least 500 feet from residential. And again, this is within the core lug. I forgot to put that on the slide. If there's, if it's separated from residential by a road, canal, or track, then that distance requirement is no longer in effect. There will be no semi-truck fueling or parking or overnight parking, so this will not allow a truck stop. All other gas stations and car washes will be required to follow the zoning ordinance. And I forgot to say, too, a combined service station and car wash would count toward this allotment if they're combined into one project. So two neighborhood meetings were held for this project. The first was held on March 31st. At that time, the project area was 1,080 acres, so it was a smaller project area. After that meeting took place, the project area was revised to add another 425 acres, bringing it up to 1,505. So there was a second neighborhood meeting on July 1st to introduce that revised scope to the public. Approximately 200 people attended the first meeting and about 85 for the second meeting. Topics discussed included types of commercial, multifamily, and amenities to be expected in the project, impacts to traffic and circulation, impacts to water and wastewater services, expected timeframes for build-out, and future plans for other properties in Estrella. Staff have also received 17 emails about the project. Most have expressed opposition or mixed opinions about it. The topics of these emails have echoed what was discussed at the neighborhood meetings. Additionally, there have been concerns about loss of desert and mountain views and impacts of multifamily to things like property values, crime rates, and aesthetics. One citizen did express support for the rezone and believed it would bring more commercial services for local residents at the southern end, southern end of Estrella. The Liberty Elementary School District and Buckeye Union High School District both service the project site. Both districts were notified of the project. Liberty provided some advice on minimum campus sizes that they'll need for any new campuses in the area. And the applicant has been working with these districts, and they'll continue to do so as the site develops. And notices for the neighborhood meeting and for this public hearing were provided as required by state and local law. So staff recommends approval of the requested rezone from the Estrella Phase 2 Planned Area Development to the Estrella 14 Planned Area Development, subject to the proposed stipulations. And I'm available for questions, and we also have the applicant here tonight.
Any questions for staff?
I do have a couple. It didn't come across clearly to me. How many units, residential units, is it currently approved for versus? How many units, residential units is it currently approved for versus what is the new proposal?
Yeah, per information provided by the applicant, I have that information here. Up to 84, if it's built at maximum allowed density, up to 8,400 homes, including 4,600 multifamily.
That's the new proposal?
That's under the existing.
Okay, and the new one?
The new one is, I believe, 6034, 6,034, I'm sorry, yeah, there we go. 6,034 total, that's all kinds.
Including the multifamily?
Yeah, including up to 864 multifamily.
So it's less?
It's less.
Is that because a big chunk of it of the regional mall is no longer there?
Basically, yeah, there wasn't going to be that large town center at the north end anymore.
How much open space is required under the current plan? Is it a similar percentage? I think you were saying the new is 18%. It was 18 before as well?
I might have to look into that for you.
18 is what they're proposing now. I'm curious to know what was the original expectation.
Okay, the applicant, I'm sorry, the applicant has a slide that'll help cover that. I apologize.
And then did the original approval include components of multifamily as well?
Yes, it did.
And I believe they were not quite as dense. We're looking to go up to the 24.
I believe for the most part, the density would have been 20 dwelling units per acre. There are some areas of Estrella Phase Two that would allow up to 50 in town center areas, 50 units per acre.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't pick up on that in the report. The most I saw, I think there was a chart that showed 18 now and we're asking to go to 24 on some areas.
Yeah.
Okay, those are my questions.
It will be complex questions. You just stated that the property is located within the city of Goodyear Water and Wastewater. How do we know we have enough water and sewer capacity to support this development?
So there is a development agreement between the city of Goodyear and Estrella for use of water that's already allocated to Goodyear. And there's a system of water credits that are allocated to individual development sites within Goodyear as they are developed. There's like a bank of credits that they can use. Wastewater, I'll admit, I'm not as knowledgeable on that topic.
Is there any documentation that supports that assumption?
They did have to prepare a master water and master wastewater report for this rezone request, which was reviewed by engineering. Individual developments, when they come in for pre-plats and site plans, will need to provide updated reports.
So at what point in this development will this, will parts of this come back to this commission? Because as you said, the LUD is just a concept at this point. So as they become, come into provision, they will be more refined and more detailed. Will it come back to this commission for further evaluation?
Preliminary plats and site plans are administrative, so those would not. There are cases where a gas station or a car wash or a drive-through may require a use permit. If it doesn't meet any of those criteria for the core lug, where it could just be allowed as a permitted use. So if a use permit is required, it would need to come back before planning and zoning and council for that.
And I assume at this point, there is no timetable for phases of this development, right?
As of this time, I don't believe so. I'll let the applicant address that because they may have something in mind.
And is road widening part of this development?
I don't believe Estrella is expected to be widened.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioner. Yes, the development is required to provide water supply, build all the water wastewater infrastructure that's needed to serve the development and build the roadways that are needed at the time of development. Our current standards require all of those things to be built as development comes in and that is what staff reviews as it goes through preliminary plat and final plat and the actual construction plans. So as Ann said, you know, we will receive water reports and wastewater reports that become more and more refined as the development goes along with more detailed information. We cannot record a final plat that we don't have water resource for. So we would never allow it to get to a point where they could build construction if we don't have sufficient water supply for it. We wouldn't bring the rezoning forward to you with a recommendation of approval if we didn't feel we could serve it with water. And again, as we've pointed out, that since they're reducing the number of units, we actually think that it's likely to use less water than if they built under the current zoning entitlement.
That's precisely my point. I just want to make sure that we don't have that issue down the road as this is developed or this is approved. Because in the past, yes, it was approved based on number of units, but the whole area was not as developed as it is today. So the use of water and availability of sewer capacity was not as limited as it is today. So I just want to make sure that because this is going within the city, the city is the one providing water and sewer services for this development, that it has enough capacity to support that.
Thank you. Yes, because this whole area was zoned as a master plan community, we have been doing our planning in the integrated water master plan for this larger development for the master plan community. So, you know, we've been anticipating the entire community to develop since, you know, under the current zoning entitlement, basically. So there is sufficient capacities or planning for expansions that are necessary to build those capacities before development occurs.
So I should develop this, particularly the individual housing units, right? They're not just in one cluster. There might be different communities, right, within that. How does that compare to the surrounding communities density-wise?
That's an excellent question. Because there will be multifamily in this community, there will be some areas that are denser than surrounding neighborhoods. And there will be neighborhoods that are single family residential that will be comparable in density. At this time, we don't know what the exact, I mean, we have caps on the number of units, but we don't know exactly what the exact number is going to be yet. But yes, there will be multifamily in this part of Estrella, whereas right now in Estrella, there really isn't any.
Let me be more specific. The immediate development that's there now, right? Are they zone R1 dash six compared to this at their old? Because that provides like pretty small building lot. Are they all like that in that area or this is the first one that would have that kind of density?
That's an excellent question. To be honest, I'm not sure. I believe most of the surrounding neighborhoods are probably about R16, R17. There are custom neighborhoods in Estrella to the north as well. It would have larger lots. I believe there's one neighborhood that has court homes, which would be smaller. But yeah, probably most lots in this area are probably somewhere in the R16 to maybe R110 range.
The reason why I brought that is because part of the criteria for approval or denial of this is that it is in conformity with the surrounding area. And if this is so dense compared to the surrounding area, then it's not in conformity anymore with that, with those other communities.
Yeah, the only, I think the only response I could say is that the existing zoning does already allow multifamily and higher density uses, so it is kind of, it's changing what's there, what's allowed there now and it is kind of a similar set of uses for what's under the existing zoning.
Okay, I just have one last question. Part of this density is 864 units. I assume those would be, are those going to be apartments?
For the existing zoning?
Well, the proposal is this will contain 6,034 residential units and 864 units may be multifamily. Are they rentals at the apartments, at the condominiums or what?
It could be either. But we don't, at this time, we're not sure what the balance of rental with for sale units would be.
Can I jump in here?
Yeah, go ahead.
Chairman, Commissioner, thank you. We cannot consider rental or for sale. We look at, as we do our evaluation, we look at density, building type and multifamily versus single family. But evaluating based on tenure is not something that is part of staff's consideration.
Well, one of the things that's kept popping in my mind is, I want to ask you is, how many apartments are there in the city of Goodyear and what is the occupancy rate? Because in my mind, I think at the present time, just based on my personal observation that we do have an apartment lot in the city and I beg to be proven wrong.
Thank you. We don't have the occupancy rates at our fingertips, but we do have that information, so we can provide it at a future time. And I also think the applicant's presentation may answer a lot of your questions and a lot of the questions are probably best directed at the applicant.
Well, that was one of my, when I came in here. The project narrative is 97 pages and the proposed ordinance is 62 pages. And it's tough to, maybe I'm the only one, but I cannot be looking at my computer all day and looking at this thing and not being able to mark up some of the salient points I want to bring up, so. So, and this will be the first time we'll be looking at this narrative probably in detail. So, that's all I have for now.
Okay, would the applicant like to make a presentation? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I get started, I'd just like to note, I think the presentation I have will address many of the questions that were just brought up. I think some of the questions on infrastructure will be in addition, so I know there's a 10-minute limit. I think I'll be right in that. If I could just have some additional time afterward, or maybe commissioners would like to rephrase their infrastructure questions to me. I do have responses for those. So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Andrew Yancy. I'm an attorney at Bergen Frank Smalley and Overholzer. We're at 4343 East Camelback Road in Phoenix, here tonight representing Estrella North LLC. They're the master developer group led by Harvard Investments. They became the owner of the Estrella community about four years ago and they're hoping to be able to finish out this very special portion of Goodyear. We're very appreciative of all the work from staff. We're very closely with them throughout this application and give a very informative presentation tonight and we appreciate their recommendation of approval. Now, this PAD is approximately 500 acres that we're proposing, known as Community 14. The current zoning is based on a 40-year-old plan and we're proposing to update it to be consistent with today's general plan. Before I get deeper into our proposal, I would like to give a bit of context. So first, I want to focus on Estrella's size. What you see here in blue is the entire city of Goodyear. Here's the Estrella community. It's an irregular shape. It's over 10,000 acres. It's about six miles north to south. By way of comparison, six miles is the same distance from Goodyear's northern boundary at Camelback all the way down to Lower Buckeye Road. So Estrella is a very large community on its own. Now, today Estrella is about half-built out. There are 8,400 homes there today. The vast majority are west of Estrella Parkway. These are all single family homes. There is no multifamily in this 10,000-acre community that's been built today. There's also a partially built-out commercial area near Estrella Parkway and Elliott in the north. Based on the plotted lots at this time and the developers' projections, we're looking at a build-out of about 20,000 homes total when this is done in the 10,000 acres. What you're looking at now is the initial zoning map from Estrella approved with some PADs in the late 1980s. The first thing to note is this 10,000-acre community is entirely zoned and planned for development. It was approved for over 42,000 homes at that time, so about double what we're anticipating to have at build-out. And there's always been a mix of single family and multifamily approved in Estrella. The other feature, and Ann noted this as well, is the previous alignment of the 303 running through here. As Ann noted, there's about 500 acres of that dark red color next to it. There was supposed to be a regional mall and was supposed to have high-intensity multifamily in it. Fast forward about 40 years, same map. You can see a lot of it's been built out. There are specific smaller PADs that were approved over time. Gulf Village came first, then Montecito and Cantomea and Lucero. Each one of those PADs has its own standard and its own unit cap. But what I want to note is if you looked at the undeveloped land, it still has that 1980s zoning on it. So that's still there today. So let's take a step back and look at the general plan. What you see on the left here is the general plan at the time that Harvard purchased the property four years ago. It has about 520 acres of business and commerce land use designation within Community 14. So the first thing Harvard did is they said, that's too much. And we applied to change that to just 40 acres of business and commerce. And that was approved at the end of 2021. At the same time, that made the rest of it neighborhoods. In the general plan update just a few years ago, there was a growth corridor added along Estrella Parkway. There's also this village area at the Willis and Estrella Parkway intersection where the general plan directs the higher intensity to go. So I think this is the same map Ann had up for the current zoning in place today. Less than half, I'm sorry, approximately half of Community 14 was prohibited from single family development under this current zoning. It's that red color. A lot of the red color is commercial. Some of it is what they called the town center, which could be commercial, but it could also be 50 units per acre multifamily and it did not have a height limit. So there are about 3,300 multifamily units approved in the town center at 50 units per acre. That's out of the overall 4,500 multifamily units that are approved as part of today's zoning. We don't think that's the right plan for Estrella and that's why we're here. There we go. Instead, our vision is consistent with the general plan. Community 14 should be predominantly single family, but we also want to facilitate a commercial core near that Estrella Parkway and Willis intersection. To help make this commercial area viable and to allow more housing choices within Estrella, our proposal does permit some higher density residential in and around this commercial core. The plan is that overall uses get less intense as you move away from that commercial core. Now, this vision represents a rightsizing of the project compared to the existing zoning. We're proposing a cap of 6,034 residential units. Only 864 of those can be multifamily. I want to be clear, that 864 multifamily units, that is a maximum. That does not mean that any multifamily units will be built. They could all go to single family. The zoning does not require multifamily in any particular place. But we do think multifamily has a place in a master plan community of this size and there is none in Estrella today. It helps bring rooftops near retail and it gives more housing choices. Now, another part of our current proposal is the open space. Estrella's always prided itself on open space and amenities. We're going to continue that tradition. Overall, we're looking at 270 acres of open space and that's 18% of the overall project. That's higher than the city's 15% that's normally applied in single family districts. We're also going to include a large community amenity. And Ann mentioned that the programming isn't set yet, but it's going to be of the same scale as the Presidio or Star Point Residence Club. And we also want to make sure that parks are well distributed. So we have a requirement that each home has a park within a quarter mile of it. So now, by Chair Sam Beto, I think this will answer some of your questions. I want to just go through a comparison of our proposal to the current zoning. We're proposing a maximum 6,034 units. Current zoning allows 8,400, so that's a reduction of over 2,300 units. Multifamily specifically, we're proposing a maximum of 864. Current zoning allows 4,500. That's a reduction of 3,600 multifamily units. We're also increasing the open space, 271 acres. Only 94 was required under the existing zoning, so that's about triple the open space that was there. Also making sure we're adding the amenities. We're rightsizing the commercial scale. It's not going to be regional next to a freeway and we're going to come into conformance with the general plan. So the last aspect to cover, and Ann hit this as well, is the land use groups. This is the layered zoning approach. Community 14's 1,500 acres, so it's probably going to take about So it's probably going to take about ten years to build out. We don't know exactly where each use is going today, but we do know enough to put some guardrails on it and allow flexibility for single-family to develop where it needs to, but also create opportunities for commercial and higher intensity at the right locations. These land use groups layer on top of each other and they use the city's own zoning districts and standards. We did not create a custom use of standards here. We implemented the cities with a few changes, many of which Anne mentioned. So just to walk through, the green is the open space, it can go anywhere. The blue is the civic space, it can go anywhere, except on that small mountain, we want that to remain open space. The estate land use group in the top right here, this is very important because this allows any of the single-family districts that Goodyear has. It can go anywhere in the property except for two places. The small mountain, we're not putting homes there. And the forty acres in the general plan that is business and commerce, because you can't put single-family in business and commerce. Anything else could develop as multifamily. As you keep going down, the village land use group allows for C one and MF twelve. That's a little more intensity, but it still has a thirty-foot height limit there. Then you get in closer to the Australia Parkway and, and Willis Road intersection. That's where you have the last two groups, the hub and the core. Hub allows for C two and MF eighteen. Core allows for MF twenty-four and also allows a mixed-use, which basically combines C two and MF twenty-four. If there's an opportunity to do ground-level retail with multifamily on top of it, we'd love to have our zoning permit that. But again, I just want to point out, even within the core and hub, the most intense districts, single-family is allowed because the estate land use group overlays it. So if that's what the market warrants down the road is single-family, that can go there, except for that forty acres, this business and commerce in the general plan. That's set aside. So before I close, I just want to emphasize, this is a, a down zone. Again, looking at the, the reduction in units that we're proposing and that we're also going to bring into conformance with the general plan. And that concludes my presentation. We respectfully request that you vote to recommend approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and in particular, if we want to get back to some of the infrastructure topics, I can answer those.
You did it right at the button. Very good, very good.
Now, I, I, I'll say Anne did such a good job that I got to cut a few lines out and I shaved about thirty seconds off from earlier today.
All right, thank you. I thought that was very informative, but let's see if we've got some questions for our panel here.
I really appreciate the chart and the numbers lined up next to each other. And I can see that it's a lot less dense of a proposal than in the past. I very much appreciate that. I do, I, you know, as I was reading the proposal, I can also appreciate the flexibility of the zoning with the land use groups. I'm sure everybody wants it to be single-family, but I do see the value in the, in the variety. And I've had, I mean, we've lived there ten years now, and I would really like to see more commercial. And I've had plenty of my neighbors say, gee, we don't have anything up here. So, nice to see that the mall's not there. Granted, there's no reason without the freeway. But I still think that, that central area that you're proposing is something that's needed. One thing that I'm not quite clear on how to address, since we do have the flexibility to put single-family everywhere, if we were to have some of that twenty-four dwelling unit per acre adjacent to it, granted across maybe a collector's street, I think we're still going to have some built-in resistance if the multifamily comes after the single-family. And that's something that the whole panel up here has had to deal with for multiple years now that we've actually got some infill projects going in. It's very challenging to, all of a sudden, even though it was zoned that, even though this project was zoned a lot more dense, it's still challenging for the community to look at something like that and say, oh, please don't put that there, regardless of whether it was zoned. And my question would be, is there a way to, once you've decided down the road to put the, the more dense apartments, is there a way to create like a reduction in density next to it so that there's some gradation between that? Maybe they put cottages next to it before they go to the single-families, or maybe they put some townhomes next to it before they go to single-families. But some way to create that caveat so that our residents in the future don't have a single-family home. Maybe it's a six thousand square foot lot, but then next year there's a three-story building next to them. Because I, I can pick out a couple of places today that have gone through the process since I've been sitting here that I'm driving by and thinking, yeah, if it was my backyard, I'd be pretty uncomfortable with it.
Yeah, Vice Chair Sanbido, thank you very much. And before I get to your question specifically, I just want to show where you're talking about the commercial core. What we're looking at is about three miles south of the existing commercial. So that's about the appropriate distance to do a second commercial area in Australia. With respect to your, your question about the, the adjacency, that's definitely something we took into account. And that's one of the reasons why we built out the, the land use groups kind of going, you know, emanating out from that central core. The development standards that are in place are still based on the city's zoning districts. So there are, you know, height stepbacks and various things like that that are involved when, when the multifamily's there. But I think the, the bigger point here and how this community is differentiated from others is you have a master developer. So, you know, we hear people talk about property value and what's multifamily going to do to my, my property value? The biggest property owner here is the Australia developer. They're not going to do something that is going to devalue their property. They, they're able to master-plan this at a higher level and look at it in a way that they're, they're not going to be doing something that's hurting the overall character of the community. It's a, it's a big investment to have this much land here and, and to be working through it. So that is, is one of the reasons why I think the layered zoning concept, it, it's not for everyone. It's not for every project, but where you have a, a master-plan developer like this, I, I think that's when, that's when it works out.
I would still like to see some restriction. Once they've made the decision, I'd like to see some buffering occurring between the uses as opposed to single-family next to the twenty-four unit density. I, I think that's too extreme of a change. And while I appreciate the layering and the fact that it could all be single-family, I'm having a hard time accepting that if it's all, half of it's built single-family and then all of a sudden in that area, the developer gets the chance to market the parcel to a very intense apartment, ultimately, he wants his money. And if he gets his money, that's all he cares about. So it leaves the people that are already living there at a disadvantage, and they can't do anything about it. So there's our few voices here, but that's it. And I would like to see some way, once that decision's been made, to buffer it. If you've already put the homes in and then you're going to build a three-story building, that's a challenge. If you put the three-story building first and then someone buys a home next to it, well, well, you knew what you were getting. But that is a struggle that we continuously run into, and I appreciate what you're saying. It's a master developer. I'm going to say something I shouldn't be saying. I've been doing development thirty years of my life. It's not new to me, and I've seen this a lot. And unfortunately, from a resident's perspective, now I have to see it from the other side. And I, I think that being a master developer, they have that control. If they want to put the apartments first, put them first. Then the person buying the home sees it and they know what they're getting into. If you want to go the other way around, once you've built the homes, if they choose to go apartments, there's a consequence to that. Then they have to give up more space or they have to put something there to give them more of a buffer. There has to be something in between. And I'm going to struggle with it if we can't come up with something to address that.
Okay, anybody else? Questions?
Can you address the reduction in the setbacks that you guys are proposing? I like that you're, it's less. I think this is a much better plan than the one forty years ago. I'm also a resident up there, and we need more commercial. And can you also address the traffic concerns that the residents have and when the cotton extension might go through?
Yes, Commissioner Hegidis, first, on the setback decreases, on, on the side setback decreases and, and lot width, or lot size decreases. Those are consistent with the city's own R one four and R one six districts, where if you meet enough amenity connectivity and streetscape elements, that, that you get to, to take those reductions. And we've worked through this with staff and, and agreed that on at least amenity and connectivity, just based on, on this proposal alone, we meet those criteria. When the, the subdivision builder comes in, they would have to meet individual streetscape criteria in order to get those reductions. On the rear yard setbacks, it is, it's something I think we're seeing more and more around the valley that, so, some people want backyard, I mean, everyone wants a backyard. Not everyone necessarily wants to pay for a backyard. They want to be able to, to get into a, a home that, that they can afford. And sometimes reducing the lot size is what gets that. The fact that this is a master-plan community with increased open space, with residence clubs, with a park within a quarter-mile of every home, is how you sort of mitigate any concern about the, the loss of a backyard area. But I think that's also something that we're seeing in, in a lot of the valley now. And again, that's a, a minimum standard. Doesn't mean every home of that size i- is going to go to that. There's a lot of different levels that the builders want to hit, that they want to market. But we want to make sure that there's that, that capability within there. When it comes to the, the traffic, we have a, you know, master TIA, a traffic impact analysis for Community fourteen. And what it looked at was at full build-out, you know, does this, this project work? And, and it said, yes, it does, with four lanes on Australia Parkway and with four lanes on Cotton Lane coming down and with multiple collectors cutting across. The timing of that is going to be dependent on the pace of development. As you know, rezoning is not the last step before we, we break ground. When we come in for a preliminary plat or a site plan, there's going to be a supplemental traffic analysis that has to be done. Some of those may be done within the next year, some of those may be done eight years from now. But there's going to be more information available at the time that's done to be able to determine what are, what are the capacity needs. And we've agreed that, you know, whatever the, the capacity needs are, whatever the infrastructure needs are, we're going to, to build that, even if it includes off-site. But the, the, the better way to figure out the, the phasing is to look at it as these separate applications come in. Because that still gives time to, to get the road built. From the time you do your pre-plat and go through final plat and get to actually building something is, is a multi-year process. So that still gives time to get the roads built in advance of the development.
Yeah, I have another question about the schools. So you're estimating three-tenths kid per dwelling for elementary. And you said eighteen hundred students, elementary students, you're anticipating at full build-out. So that would be two elementary schools. So you're planning to have those within there too and the community center?
So, Commissioner Hegidis, the way that it is frankly always worked in Australia is we've, we've got a relationship with the Buckeye Union High School District and with the Liberty Elementary School District. And when they need land for school, we, we give it to them. We're working with the high school right now on an expansion. We've got about twenty-two acres set aside that if they get their bond passed, we'll give that to them to, to expand the high school. When it comes to elementary school, we can give them a site within this Community fourteen if they need it. There's an existing site over by the Presidio in Montecito right now that the school district actually just contacted us today to, to talk about, you know, when they could start going forward on that or at least initiate. I don't want to make it sound like it's too far down the road, at least initiate the, the discussions on that. So whatever the school needs are, we're in frequent conversation with these districts and we donate the land that they need when they need it.
I didn't get an answer to one of my questions before. Will this come back to this commission as it gets developed? And, and, and the other thing is, you may not have an answer today, but which one would you do first? Residential or commercial or what?
So I'll, I'll hit the second question first. And there's, there's no required phasing under this. I think the reality is residential is likely to come first and then they'll, they'll be mixing in of, of the commercial as it goes. There's got to be enough rooftops around the commercial area to warrant the building out of the commercial. So it, it, it's not required. We could certainly get a proposal from someone. If somebody wanted to get out ahead and put a second grocery store down there, we'd certainly talk to them about it. But, you know, I think the more likely result is, is that you'd see some single, at least some of the single-family coming in first. With regard to what comes back through the commission and council, as Anne noted, there are certain use permit uses that are, that are in the code today that require use permits that would, that would come back in if they needed to go through. If a proposal complies with the zoning districts of the land use group they're in, they, they don't have to come back because the land use groups already set the boundaries and, and set the rules for those. Now, the way something would need to come back is if someone wanted to decrease the open space. If someone wanted to increase the overall unit cap. If someone wanted to deviate from the standards that are, are in the, in, in the PAD in a material way. The, or if someone wanted to change the land use groups themselves, that would have to come back through here. And, and, and the last component of it, and this one's kind of a little in the weeds and the intricacy. If, if there's a piece of land and, and it gets developed, once it goes for a preliminary plat, it gets assigned to one of the districts. So let's say it goes R one six. So now it's R one six. If somebody decides they want to change that piece of land and do something else on it, now it's a rezone and they're coming through. Because once that district is assigned to that land, it's stuck until they come back through commission and council to, to amend that. Okay, thank you. May I address the water and sewer questions you had before? So Australia is party to multiple development agreements with the city. We have an agreement about some of the cap water that's at the surface water treatment plant expand, or surface water treatment plant. Now, the former developer built a thirty-inch pipe that runs all the way down Australia Parkway that delivers that water, paid for some of the, the capacity up there. We've got about six thousand EDUs worth of potable water left under that that we can, we can draw on. Australia also uses an extensive non-potable system for its, its landscaping. So there's a, a benefit in, in their water use. They use a lot of effluent in order to do the, the landscaping. The, is, with respect to wastewater, just last year, the city approved an agreement with us to expand the Rainbow Valley Wastewater Treatment Plant from point seventy-five million gallons per day to two million gallons per day. That opens up approximately eight to nine thousand more EDUs of sewer capacity. Frankly, that's why we're here now. Because the, the city council decided they would, they would expand that treatment facility. That opens up the infrastructure capacity to be able to continue building out this community. So that's why, you know, we did the general plan amendment a few years ago, but it didn't really make sense for us to rezone until we had that infrastructure capacity in place. Now that's in place, so now we're coming in for the rezone. Thank you, I appreciate that.
What happens if this is not approved? Does it go back and you can build the eight thousand? Is it, can you still build with the current zoning?
Commissioner Roberts, that's correct. The existing zoning stays in place.
Is the power line, the power line corridor totally outside of this development? Or does it run through it?
No, Commissioner Hegidis, that is part of, of this development and that's intended to be built out with a, a trail running through it. I know there's some unbuilt trails in there now, but.
That doesn't count towards that eighteen percent open space, does it?
It, it can count toward the usable if improved. So improving the trail on it triggers it being counted.
There's limited things you can do because they have to have access. Utilities have to have access through that, so you can't do too much to it, right?
I, that's correct. I don't, I, I don't know the full ins and outs of, of that, but I, I know making it part of a, a trail system is feasible.
Okay, if there's something else, let's see if there's any speaker cards. Thank you.
We do have several. I'll start with people who've indicated they wish to speak. So when I call your name, if you'd like to come forward, Mike Durda. And as you're coming up, each speaker is limited to three minutes. The screens will let you know how much time you have left to speak. Before you begin to speak, please identify yourself by clearly stating for the record your name and if you are a Goodyear resident.
My name is Mike Durda, D U R D A. I'm a resident of Australia.
Could you use a microphone, please, stand up front microphone?
Mike Durda, D U R D A. I live in Cantomea, resident of Australia. So decades ago, I often traveled to Arizona with friends to visit friends. Traveled down Interstate ten, Goodyear was really a horrible place. It was covered with the graffiti painted Horse Stadium. My recollection was nothing more than you'd see signs saying, don't pick up hitchhikers because they were probably prisoners also. So I thought, why on earth would anybody live here? So I thought, why on earth would anybody live here? And ten years later, two friends moved to Australia and I thought, well, let's go to Goodyear and find out what that's all about. It was geographically confined, it had a unique character, and it seemed to me that it was beautifully planned. So today, as I drive past the Star Tower, my attitude changes every day. The feeling is that someone designed this place really well. The hills were created and left naturally. They're not stacked with houses they are, as they are in the Hollywood Hills where I came from. So, you know, i- i- it's not, it's not given to so who can afford the better view? It's really just about the plan and the community. It's really nice to drive up a tree-lined parkway, filled with pathways that can be walked on or driven on or with golf carts or 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 all modes of transportation that we use now. Along the path are places to eat, to sit, to enjoy. I think the builder has done an amazing job of developing Australia into a wonderful place to live. And those of us who have chosen to live there love what it is. And so we have everything from, you know, when I see cars in a parking lot, I think, you know, they're there for dental work. They're there for a massage, they're there for P T, they're there to pick up kids from a school, they're there to do anything that we do in our life. And there needs to be more of that. And this plan seems to offer all of that. It's also only four miles from my door. So I think that's really wonderful. I think they've done a wonderful job of mixing the housing of multifamily developments because until there are enough rooftops, there aren't gonna be restaurants. And just because it's multi-use doesn't mean there are transients coming in. That's just crazy, although that's what my neighbors think. So I welcome this. I think it's the best thing we can do and I hope that you vote for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Okay, next speaker, Joseph DeLibro, DeLibro.
Good evening. My name is Joseph DeLibro. I live up in Cantomea. And I oppose this application. Right now, I think this should be tabled for another time, maybe next year. Uh I'm not thrilled about having six thousand homes up there, maybe five thousand or something. Uh they're moving the lots from five thousand s- uh from seven thousand square feet down to five thousand. Uh I don't like the idea of that. The height density, I live in Cantomea, they wanna put up possibly ten buildings with eighty homes in each building right across the street from Cantomea. To me, it's gonna look like Ballpark Village where you have all these high-intensity buildings. Uh I don't wanna live like that. Or you go down by uh I don't, anyways, there's some uh small lots, the fifty-by-a-hundred lots that have all these tiny homes. I don't think we want too many renters. We want more homeowners, okay? The transients are good, but they're not here forever. Uh another thing, right now, we have six builders up there. They're in the process of building another thousand homes in the next two years. Uh with traffic, until the city and the developer can figure out what they wanna do with Cotton Lane to get two lanes from the bridge all the way up to Australia. We need two lanes of traffic. That may be another year, two years down the road. We're still waiting for the Estrella Bridge to be started. I think it's still in design. And when that comes out, that might not be buil- uh started till twenty-six or twenty-seven. That's a two-year project. And to have more builders coming in now, I just think there's too much going on there, especially like you say with the roads. I think we need the infrastructure before we can move on that way. Uh the high schools and everything, the high school we have up there right now is at capacity. Uh if you have a, they did a traffic study, but if you live in E M R right now and you go up between seven in the morning and nine o'clock, traffic on Australia Parkway is crazy. In the afternoon, we have fifteen buses coming down. You have a hundred kids that are driving up that area right there. Last week, we just had an accident. Buses and cars are going through the si- off the side roads, okay? At some point too down the road, we gotta take a look, is the city ready to spend millions of dollars making the two-lane highway on Australia Parkway three and three? Cause at some point, that's gonna happen. But thank you, and I think this should be just tabled and wait another year before you vote on it. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Who's next?
Okay, next speaker is Frances Lipman.
Good evening. I'm Frances Lipman. I live in Cantomea. I think progress is progress, but I think it has to be measured. And I agree with Commissioner that water needs to be talked about. Is that we are in a global warming and it's all over the world. I think the multifamily, the apartment buildings is a problem in development. Not because of the placement necessarily, but I think just the volume of of units and the height. We all came out to Cantomea and to Australia for the views aesthetically. We know that's gonna change because more people are gonna come. But I think the hi- the height is a problem. I think the uh Vice Chairman brought about the uh townhomes. I think the townhomes would be appropriate for the aesthetic. And if there has to be a layered or a a buffer zone, that would be helpful. I love it up there. I hate to see it change. We like to be able to ride our bicycle every single day and we can do that. And we ride down the hill and into the park. It's great. My concern is the buffer between the park and the development. What is that gonna do to the park? What is that gonna do do to the habitat? What is that gonna do to the creatures that come and visit us? Are they all gonna disappear? So the volume is a big concern. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a couple more speaker cards um who did not indicate whether or not they wish to speak. So when I call your name, if you could just let us know, um Mark Charles.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm Mark Charles. I live in Australia. I've been in uh Goodyear for three years. Um we bought bought here from Chicago um for a very small part because of open fields and mountain views. And in three years, they're pretty much gone. Um so I'm disappointed that we're, I feel like we're turning into an industrial city with a transient population. And I don't know what the strategic plan is for for the city in general, but I bought in a ci- I actually lived in Cantomea. We moved out just for a larger house, but I'm in Segovia Two right on Willis. And there's some development going on there also, but I'm not opposed to the to development at all. I understand that's gonna happen. I understand, I think there's maybe eighteen thousand acres maybe left in Australia to go, something like that. I don't know. But I am opposed to the high-density housing that is gonna be in that area. Uh I I don't mind the commercial part of it being there and I I really don't mind the multifamily. But it's just that it could be four stories if commercial's on the first uh floor based on the meeting that I went to originally at Cantomea. So that's that's my opposition. Have nothing against renters, but there is concern with the the traffic and what the construction traffic is gonna do to Australia. And I do leave at seven in the morning and it's tough to get down. The street um just in the last three years, it's picked up. I I understand that cotton would not be developed until they understand if they need it. But if there could be a dirt road or something there where the construction traffic went that way instead of an Australia, cause we will have to deal with five to ten years of construction traffic on Australia. So that's my concern. Um I'm, I would like to maintain the beauty of it. We moved here cause it is gorgeous, especially coming from Chicago. And I I just wanna see that maintained. So I appreciate your comments. I do worry. I all I hear is we don't have water. Um we're reducing the amount that we take from the Colorado. I don't believe we use Colorado water out here, but you know, what what is happening with the water? How come all of a sudden this is fine? And I don't know if it's true, but of our apartments um exempt from that hundred-year plan. I don't know enough about it, but it it sounds to me like we're not thinking that part through. So um I appreciate you letting me speak. Thank you.
Okay, the next card I have is Mary Charles. Again, let us know if you'd like to speak or not. No, okay. And then I do have one card, um I believe it's a resident of Cantomea, um but I do not have a name. Alright, so then I do have uh one other uh card in support that d- does not wish to speak. And then uh six other speaker cards in opposition who also do not wish to speak.
And those are all the speaker cards we have received for now. Um if there's anyone else that would like to speak, uh they would need to fill out a speaker card, but I also have something to read into the record with your permission.
First of all, anyone else out in the audience wanna speak? Okay, you said something?
Yes, and then I have a resident comment, eh eh if it would be okay to read into the record?
Eh we just have one?
Yes.
Uh okay, I'll use my discretion and so you can go ahead and read that one.
Okay, I will start the timer. My name is Jeff Redman and I live in the Australian community, specifically the Segovia Two development. I would like to address a couple of key concerns that most of the community and I have with this project in its present format. This is part of my continued efforts to draw awareness to protecting the quality of life in Australia regarding the explosive growth in Goodyear. I believe all of us accept that it's inevitable this land will be developed at some point. We urge you to vote no to the rezone in its present proposed format below our two key reasons. Australia says no to apartments in the compu- community. The consensus is that three and four-story apartments do not bring value to the community. Existing homeowners specifically in the Cantomea and surrounding developments do not want three- and four-story apartment balconies peering into their communities and backyards. These apartments would also block the view of the mountains for countless homeowners. Anyone that has ever lived in an apartment complex knows that they bring guaranteed parking capacity issues, increased crime, additional traffic, and a lifestyle that is not improving the quality of life in the Australia community. If more apartments are to be built, they need to be built near the thousands that have been built off of the I c- the off the Van Buren and I ten area. Please do not allow apartments to be built in this community. Number two, protect Australia Parkway for the existing residents in the community during this five-to-ten-year build-out. Mandate that the developers and builders of this proposed new construction projects redraft their proposed land development to expand to Cotton Lane Road before the building begins. Therefore, routing all the construction traffic through the new thoroughfare and leaving Australia Parkway for use by the existing residents. We do not want Australia Parkway to be abused and congested by the developers, builders, and contractors with their concrete trucks and building supplies, so building supply trucks, creating an unsafe and hazardous environment for those of us who currently live in the Australia area. Again, we all accept that this land will be developed and expanded, but we urge you to vote no to this rezoning in its present format for the reasons stated. Please have the developers modify their plans as stated to help preserve the quality of life for those who live in Australia and Cantomea. Thank you. And those are the only comments I have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. About that later?
Comments in general, I actually have some follow-up to uh
A minute and a half. You got, you got a minute and a half.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just long as it's it's in response to a question, okay. Well, there was a question asked, at least trying to respond.
Uh thank you, Mister Chair. I I'm gonna stick to the the multifamily questions and, you know, again, Australia is not is not open space heading east of Australia Parkway. It's zoned, it's zoned for multifamily now. That could, under current zoning, reach up higher than the city's height limit. We've set it up where anything over thirty feet is concentrated near the Willis and Australia Parkway intersection where the general plan says that the higher intensity development is supposed to occur. I've also heard, you know, questions about there there being too much multifamily in in Goodyear overall. You saw the comparison, the size of Australia to the rest of Goodyear. I I don't know how many multifamily projects there are in the rest of Goodyear, but there's zero in Australia right now. And multifamily is healthy for a large community. It brings rooftops to retail, which helps bring the retail in. It also provides an opportunity for people who maybe can't afford a house yet, but they wanna get a foothold in the community. Maybe somebody whose kid grew up in Australia and wants to come back there. Um and of course, again, what we're proposing is actually a a big reduction in multifamily. We will follow the city's design guidelines. We did not ask for any relief from any of the design guidelines, so the design will will comport with that. Eh and finally, Vice Chair Sambito, on your separation question. Uh looked at it a little more specifically and of MF twenty-four project coming in to this community would follow the same rules as MF twenty-four going anywhere else in the city next to single family. There's a fifty-foot setback and then another fif- another five feet for every foot over thirty feet of height. So forty-foot project would be a hundred-foot setback from a single family, the same as anywhere else in the city cause we just imported those standards. Anything more would be asking us to be more restricted in the rest of the city.
Alright, thank you. Hey, do it again. Public hearing's closed. With Secretary, please read the staff recommendation.
Recommend approval of the request to rezone the subject property from P A D to P A D as set forth in the draft ordinance number twenty-twenty-five dash X X X X. Is there a motion for the staff recommendation or a motion to recommend denial of the staff recommendation?
Isn't it not working? Can we have a motion? Motion from Commissioner Roberts, a second?
A second.
Thank you. Uh second from Vice Chair Sambito. The floor is open for commission discussion.
Okay, let's have some discussion. Of course, you know, I've been here for a long time. I've been here twenty-five years. When I moved here to Goodyear, I had fifteen thousand population. And I used to go play golf at the golf course up at Estrella. And the back nine was just desert. It was beautiful, but now it's houses, so things happen. Um and I can see what people are wan- worrying about. But if this is not passed and they decide to go ahead with the way the current zoning is, i- it can't be better. That's the way I look at it. And and you live up there, so.
I I don't disagree. I mean, he he had a great point. He had the chart that reflected how many fewer units there were. Not to mention when you take out the regional component, which was all the red and you redistribute six thousand units across it. It's a lot less dense than is already approved today. I mean, they could in theory go out there and build that south half as dense as they are already allowed to and then come and ask just for the north side what they wanna do and they would end up with more homes. And today, in that red area, they, if I'm understanding, there's no limit on the height of apartments. And they could put more apartments. And I wouldn't want to see that. I mean, I like how they're the w- the way they did their land use groupings. I like that. I like that it, my only struggle is with if you put the horse in the wrong side of the cart, how do we prevent that situation? And I respect what he's said. I mean, I I've seen it and we've all seen it multiple times that if the offensive structure came first, it's the fence being perspective. It's the person that's living there. Um if that structure came first, there would be no problem. Or if once it's there, then you 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 subject yourself to, okay, we have to create a different zoning next door as a fallout. And I don't know if that's some kind of stipulation we could create or some kind of change or something. That's my thought on that one. I and I I did note that many of the residents were bringing up the point of the widening of the two streets. Now, it's not really relative to this per per se because it was already zoned for what? Eight thousand units or whatever, so it would already is approved. So that's not really a trigger point. But I'm curious to know, is there a trigger point out there, like on the twenty-six-thousandth unit or something like that, that those roads have to be in place before we issue another permit? Or do we just keep issuing permits? It may not be the subject to to this particular proposal, but is there some critical thing, I guess I'm asking, team management here where that has to happen before we can keep going? Cause as they were all talking, my first thoughts go, well, you know, granted, we're not California, but I've have friends in Australia that have their fire insurance was canceled, so it's a possibility here too. What if all of a sudden there's a major fire coming across? The H O A is not doing a good job on the trails of ticking up the dead trees, so we could all burn down. The HOA is not doing a good job on the trails of ticking up the dead trees, so we could all burn down. We've got single roads going in and out, and yeah, there's three of them. But you put all those cars on there and a few buses, we ain't going nowhere. So we gotta get those lanes in there, and we have to have a confident idea of, yeah, and they take them twenty years or fifteen years to build this out, but we're still all up there stuck. Sorry.
Why can that not be added as part of a stipulation for approval of this project? Because that's, to me, if I have to vote yes for this project, that would be my additional stipulation, that the road improvement be addressed first.
Well, I don't know about first, because they may not happen. The developments may not even happen for twenty years. But if you triggered it on some action, so say, on some particular unit.
I understand that, but the impact on traffic there will not exacerbate if there's no development. They'll be the same. But I'm just saying that if, in fact, they started this development, that the road improvement be addressed first. Otherwise, you're gonna have horrendous traffic in that area. Construction, vehicles in and out and so forth.
We've had that on pretty much every development that's come forward here, and we've never put that forward to begin with. So I can't see how we can put it on this. And I don't foresee that that's a big problem.
That you cannot put it in?
Well, I don't. I wouldn't bring it forward, but for myself.
I would definitely think at some point it becomes valid when you have
Certainly, but.
I don't know, thirty thousand people living up there with three or four possibly two-lane roads to get us out, and half of them don't even know that two of them exist. All of a sudden, there's a fire, and they all wanna go. People go where they always go. They're gonna go Australia and Cotton. They're not gonna go any. They're not gonna go to Elliott. They're not gonna go to Willis. They're gonna go where they go, and then everybody's there, and we can't go anywhere. We don't want that. But I'd like to hear what Katie has to say as far as what options and where the because I think this is a city responsibility, is it not?
Thank you. Correct. It is a city responsibility. Our standards require, you know, and for, again, as it was stated, this is a very large development. So it's not typical from other developments where you know what you see. So it is a little bit more complicated. I do wanna be clear, they are required to build all those roadways. They are required to build, you know, Cotton Lane and any other roadways within the development. And how those roads develop can depend on the phasing of the project. It is typical developments will build the roadways adjacent to their development. So if their phasing is in a certain area near Cotton Lane, they may need to build Cotton Lane first. If their phasing is a different portion of the community, they may or may not need to develop Cotton Lane. As they progress, as they go to preliminary plat and final plat and construction documents, they provide us traffic studies all along the way. And that, you know, and those traffic studies are done by traffic engineers and sealed by those traffic engineers and done per traffic standards. So they provide us the information on how many cars and vehicle trips are generated per those uses, per all the standards. And we review that as we go and require the improvements that are necessary along the way. And again, as you say, it is a city responsibility. So at some point, the city could need to step in with the CIP project to do improvements as we're, you know, the city is expanding Australia Bridge as a CIP project. So if that's necessary, the city will do projects and roadway expansions as we need to. But I can't tell you, you know, the roads are gonna develop in a certain way, because, again, it's such a large area, and it depends how they preliminary plat it, and we get more information.
So until a traffic impact analysis indicates a level F of service, we will not take any action as a city to require them to do anything?
No, it's not a level F.
Well, I'm saying, when it gets to that point, that's too late. We're not gonna wait till it gets to that point.
Well, again, that's where the city would step in possibly to do improvements if, I mean, like, the area could develop. I mean, Australia could stop building homes today, and the traffic could still increase because of impacts from the county. I mean, there, traffic is a complicated thing to plan around, and so it's not just this development that might increase traffic. That's why the city's continually doing traffic studies even outside of development. We do traffic counts on the city and evaluate the roadways.
Well, I might suggest that I don't disagree. This isn't something that's common, but I think you would have to agree with me that this is probably the largest planned development in the city, and it may be a point that we need to consider that the reality is there are four two-lane roads in and out of there, two of which are very unknown to most of the populace there. If something drastic happened, they wouldn't be able to get out, so.
I do caution you making statements like that. There are many roadways. I mean, you can get.
There are four.
There is Rainbow Valley Road down to the south. You can get over on Queen Creek.
That's a dirt road. That's a dirt road off of Australia. There's Willis, there's Elliott, there's Cotton.
But it is important to know that there is emergency access.
But we don't know that, and we live there, so how would you know? If everything's on fire, how do you know? Katie, I'm sorry. That's a struggle for me.
Are we talking about all of Australia, or are we just talking about this progress?
All of it. But these people that would move in there are gonna be in the traffic jam to get out of there.
That's right. Are there traffic lights there now?
Yeah, there's traffic lights. I mean, it's organized. It's structured. Everything moves well. I just feel like if we're gonna wait until it's a point, and maybe the emergency isn't the right example to use, but if we're gonna wait to a point where the service, the city's not gonna take action till the service is so bad, every single developer out there, even the people in Montecito who are currently developing, they already got the clear pass. They're not building the road. But at some point, someone's gotta take it on. And you're, I understand that it's their responsibility, but when do we impose it on them as the master developer? There has to be some trigger point. They're in control of the whole site.
There are trigger points. And again, it's outlined by traffic standards and the traffic master plan, which is.
So define that for me, so everybody here can understand what the trigger point is.
Details, because I'm not a traffic engineer. And again, we can have our traffic engineer follow up with you on that. But I would ask, you know, we follow all the standards, MAG standards, ADOT standards, and our traffic team takes all of this very seriously. They work hand-in-hand with our public safety, who also reviews all of this information. And we would never allow an unsafe situation in the community.
Water was brought up, and the city does their due diligence to ensure that we're all following and up to the date with the hundred-year plan and so forth. So I don't think there's any problem with that.
Correct. We are a designated water service provider. We have our one-hundred-year water supply and all of the entitled units. We have water plans for it. And again, we would, water becomes committed at the time of final plat, so we would never approve of, we have the authority to deny a final plat if we don't have water resource.
That was my first question. That's why they answered it. But again, my really concern, there is road improvement. So unless that's get is addressed beforehand, I mean, this project is just going to create some chaos in that area, traffic wise.
And I'm just gonna piggyback in terms of, this is just for, you know, the future, you know, public safety and law enforcement. I went on a ride-along maybe seven years ago in Australia, and there was only one police officer assigned to that area. And I don't know, over the years, if there's more out there, it's changed. But as we build out there, will we increase the patrol out there with more than one officer? Or is it just gonna be one officer patrolling that area morning, noon, and night?
So going back to my question, you cannot put that as a stipulation for approval of this project?
Thank you. I would not recommend that stipulation. You have recommended staff stipulations. I would be concerned about the nexus of, you know, we can only require development to do the infrastructure that they're triggering the need for. So you have staff recommended stipulations.
Katie, would it be possible, maybe? I don't disagree with you. I don't think it's something to impose on this particular part of the project. I don't think it's fair that it's imposed on this part. Would it be possible to maybe have a follow-up, like, lesson or instruction from the traffic department on how they would look at that and at what point? So we can understand better from them, who are the specialists in it? Because, like I said, there's, I recognize Lucero's still happening. There's still stuff further towards the north, and there's still stuff in Montecito. There's still a lot to go. But at some point, from our perspective, we keep having to approve things which add more units, which add more impact. It would be comforting to us to say, oh, yeah, we know when it's coming. We understand that. That would be helpful. I don't think, for me especially, having probably too much, which not enough education locally here, but too much concerns and questions in my head, that I feel Australia, to me, feels isolated down there. We don't have a lot of developed connections. And it would be nice to understand that perspective from a traffic, educated traffic information. I don't see that as something to hold me up here. That's not the holdup for me.
Thank you. We would be absolutely happy to do that. Have our city traffic engineer come in, provide information on the master traffic plan, what they do in their reviews, give more details on what are the triggers when new roadway is necessary, when new lanes are necessary on an existing roadway, how things get added to our CIP, all those questions, yes. I know our traffic team would be happy to come. On the same token, we can do the same thing with our water services team to talk about how we're planning for water, our integrated water master plan, and how we're assuring we have a safe and reliable water supply.
Can that be all scheduled for the next meeting?
Well, we'll have to coordinate, but we will do it as soon as staff are available, absolutely.
Anybody else? Call for the question?
Okay. Please enter your vote.
Can I make a motion?
We're to help.
We already.
So there is.
Vote on this motion.
Okay, then.
There's a motion on the table, so as soon as we dispose of this motion, we can then make another motion.
Definitely.
Please, please enter your vote.
Any luck now?
Nope.
Okay, I will do a voice vote. Give me one moment. Commissioner Roberts?
Hi.
Thank you. Commissioner Booth?
Aye.
Commissioner Hegidis?
Aye.
Commissioner Nepomucino?
No.
Vice Chair Sambito?
Aye.
Chairman Clymer?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. I'm entering it now. I apologize for the technical difficulties. Motion passes. Recommendation of approval will be forwarded to the city council for their September twenty-second meeting.
Okay, are there any staff communications?
Thank you, Chair. Yes. City council reconvened after their summer break on August twenty-fifth, and they considered the items that this commission sent forward to them at their, at your last meeting. As a reminder, the first one was the Piscern multifamily rezone, and council approved the item as recommended by commission. The other one was a use permit for the Terrible's Convenience Use, and council also approved that per recommended approval from Planning Commission. And the final item was the car wash at the Triangle use permit, which council also approved per recommendation. And those are all the staff communications I have. Thank you.
Okay, the next Planning and Zoning Commission meeting will be held on October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, at the Goodyear City Hall Council Chamber at six p.m.